Okay, I'll call the City Council Workshop to order Monday, July 31st, 5:00 PM roll call.
David Paradise.
Sam Solars.
Nicole Adria.
Jessica Manuel.
Michelle Addo.
Jeremy Looklow.
Kirby Moynihan.
Kevin Triplet.
Ray County Service Discussion.
So I know that we've talked as council staff about this, about getting possibly some help with my we've changed a part of our traffic code to try and get some help with some of that code enforcement stuff as far as parking. I know that's one of my big goals for this discussion today because we have some issues. People park with their RVs and boats and stuff all over and it's hard to write a letter if I'm not sure exactly which house it belongs to or who the owner of whatever it is.
Sure.
Who that is. So I know there might be some other things that we want to talk about, but I know that was one of the main things is we changed our traffic code to help you guys be able to enforce the code and help us do that a little bit more because probably a lot of the complaints we get are about that, like the traffic and the parking and stuff, so.
Again, I guess what are your guys' expectations as far as those? Are you expecting our deputies to be driving around and just spotting them and dealing with them on their own? Because I know, like, so we have some of these different cities. We work with Monticello, for example, have a lot of ordinance violations. So what they do is they send out that letter first, which the county attorney's really appreciated in the past, then, because we're looking to gain compliance, right? I mean, that's, I don't think anybody's really wants a whole lot of citations written for this stuff, but we're looking to gain compliance. So if you send that letter out and they don't get the, they don't get the letter back, and our deputies can definitely help you in narrowing down.
Yeah, that's part of the problem right now, yeah. Like, I just can't always determine, or I write the letter and the person called me back, that's not my boat.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if there is, if there is something that the city sees and we write a letter, that's fine, but one of the problems I've noticed is that, we'll just, just First Street, for example, over this last weekend, somebody had a significantly large boat sitting in the road outside their house, and it took up
Half the road.
two-thirds of the lane.
Yep.
And it was there all weekend, and I guess I don't know if they were ticketed or what, but I mean, that, that seems like a pretty significant thing for a deputy to just spot it as they drive by and go, "Uh, I think I'll stop and talk to them," or write them a citation, or...
That's a fairly easy thing for us, or for me to address on my end of it, just with our deputies working in town. Just letting them know, like, if you could just let me know, like, what are some of the common ones, do you think, or what, what your expectations would be if our deputies driving around? I have no problem sending that out, or even creating a little cheat sheet for the deputies that are working in Montrose.
Yeah, there seems to be specific areas particularly that, that, yeah, they gather, that, you know, people have their RVs and boats and park like all along the street, and so there's some problem areas maybe that you guys can help with.
Yeah, absolutely, and then I can...
Send some of that out.
You can give them the ordinance numbers that they can write out the citations for, you know, so that they're aware of them. And we do have some new people to transfer through, right? Or if we have vacations or somebody calls in sick, it's maybe somebody that's not used to work in this area. You're guaranteed to have those hours filled every day, whether it's the deputy that's usually working town, or somebody takes vacation, unlike some of the other contracting things that I've seen, where we're guaranteeing you're gonna have somebody in town here at least for the 10 hours that you guys contract for us. I'm going to be with all of coverage.
Yeah.
We might vary the times a little bit depending on if there's a meeting or something like that, but the regular deputy that are in town should be spotting that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I was just hoping with the new ordinance that they can just help tighten some of that up and educate people and get some compliance that way, just because I'm sure some people don't know and some people just think we're not paying attention, or we don't care, so.
And what I like to...
And that's not the case, but...
What I like to tell our deputies too is, we're looking for compliance here, right?
Yes.
So if they can stop on and have a friendly conversation with somebody, maybe they just moved into the area and they didn't check the ordinances and they don't even know that an ordinance like that exists, an opportunity to have a positive interaction with somebody, "Hey, this is what the ordinance is. You can't park here. I'll give you 24 hours to get this thing moved," or unless it's something where they're taking up a third of the street, well, that's not gonna have 24 hours to get that fixed, you know, but can walk away from an interaction like that and being positive, but I'll, when they come back in two days and things still sit and everyone's already doing something different, so.
Yeah. Yeah, just some help with that, and we can definitely work together with the deputies, whoever is in town. Yeah. They have been stopping more often, I know.
Deputy Kaylee?
Hmm? He's been stopping fairly often, just checking in with us, which, you know, we really appreciate that for stuff like this too, because it seems to come up like every day where there's some new something parked on the street and somebody's complaining about it, so.
And I know he, just last week, Friday, he stopped in at Waverly, that's part of his patrol area too, you know, so he stopped in at Waverly, and they had two vehicles. There was a motor home and then another vehicle were actually sitting on the sidewalk. That's a state statute.
Right.
So that was a fairly easy one. He just issued two citations to the same person, one for the motor home and one for the truck that's sitting there, so. So that seemed to work out pretty good, so. As long as he's stopping in, if I get his partner who works opposite him to stop in too during the day, and we probably almost make it a daily basis to stop in and check in and see if anything's locked up, so.
Yeah, until we get some of this under control and get people to where they're mostly in compliance, you know, there might be one or two here and there, but to get, you know, cleaned up a little bit, because it is, it's a hazard. I mean, up and down, like, mid-lane, for example, I mean, there's people parked on both sides of the streets.
Right on that corner, sometimes it's...
There's RVs, I mean, you can't see, you're driving, you're weaving in between cars, I mean, it's, yeah.
And I'll be perfectly honest, probably be a lot easier if some of these things you're talking about are state statutes. It'd be easier for our deputies to write out some state statutes for parking and some of that kind of stuff, too, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, the other one is RVs, or not RVs, ATVs.
Okay.
In the original park. We have quite a few ATVs. I don't care if people drive them, whatever, from point A to point B, but they're everything around in Charnet Park.
Okay.
So, I don't know what, it's supposed to be planted too.
I know, I know, so.
Any, any idea what times these are, you, do you think these are going through, or...
Usually like, like now, between now and dusk.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Same ones, different ones, any idea?
It's usually the same ones.
Same ones?
Yeah.
We take care of that? And if these things are popping up, I don't know if you can send me an email, or maybe if you haven't seen a deputy in like a day or two, if anybody's stopping, I've got a list of stuff to take care of, you know, I can take care of that too, so. Some of it I think just sounds like maybe some communication type thing, and just letting us know where some of the issues are, and I'll be more than happy to put a couple of deputies out.
Anything else for our service?
So, the fun topic, how is the cannabis stuff gonna be controlled and enforced? Oh, what up? Your own hours now.
So, I don't know if you've read the bill, 321 pages, obviously you're...
It's a page turner.
Might have missed a few pages in there.
Well, 321 pages, and I haven't read it word for word, but I can tell by just reading it that I believe things were purposely left out of it and then some things included. So I think with this next session that we're gonna have, whenever that is, I think we're gonna get some more guidance on how they, what they wanna see the state of Minnesota going towards. You know, part of the problem is right now, if they're over 21, you can carry two ounces of marijuana or alcohol, but they don't, they haven't made it so you can legally purchase it yet.
Right.
You know, so it's like, well, how do you enforce, I mean, there's some packaging laws and stuff like that. Well, you can't legally buy it anywhere, but you can still possess two ounces on your first. How do you enforce that? You know, and even if it's the smoking marijuana in public, you know, they make it a crime in this bill, but they don't stipulate, like, what the penalty will be. So there's some, there's some ways around that according to the county attorney, but it's not, it's not very easy to get there. So we're stuck right now, and the courts haven't had, it's brand new, so the courts, there's no case law out there to kind of guide us on it, and the laws are very clear that they wrote, so we almost have to wait and kind of test the waters and see what happens. I don't think Ray County wants to be the guinea pig to test this stuff out and end up in the Supreme Court or something like that, so we're kind of waiting to see how this thing is all gonna unfold and what's it actually gonna look like. And then we're, now we're dealing with a petty misdemeanor too if it's, they're out there smoking it, so technically it's not even a crime, right? And then we're gonna make the test of what we can do. I know a lot of questions have come up with maybe sitting on a patio somewhere and they're smoking in an establishment. Well, I don't know if they're working on respond to those kind of smoking in public type calls. I think that's gonna be up to the business to put a stop to that if they're out on their patio. This is my two cents on it. A lot of this might change here in a month or two months even after some case law gets established, and what's our county attorney wanna do with some of these things, so it's kind of up in the air, so not a great answer for you right now, but we're kind of taking that, let's wait and see how this thing evolves before we come up with a way we're gonna do the things for it.
Well, I know it's completely different, but you have THC drinks out there, so people can legally drink those anywhere. It's gonna be tough to prosecute on petty misdemeanor for smoking.
It is, it is, and I look at it this way, too. We get, we get that call from somebody saying there's somebody walking down the sidewalk smoking a joint, while our deputy rolls up there and if they're, don't observe them smoking, they're very limited and it's probably not gonna be a great interaction. You know, walk up to them and ask them if there's smoke, and we don't have the right to search them. We're dealing with a petty misdemeanor, so this is gonna be problematic, I think. It's gonna be problematic, and I don't have a great answer for it. We're gonna, we're even divided a little bit amongst the sheriff's office, even on how we're gonna proceed in which direction we're gonna go with a couple of these things, but for right now, I think my best answer is just wait and see how this thing develops a little bit and we'll come up with a policy or procedure on how we're gonna attack it.
Yeah, we got a joint power of attorney sample from them to start talking about, you know, how we're gonna do enforcement going forward, and we are interested in joining that if and when they do that.
Okay, I think that was, came up from Brian, who would say, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yep, so, once we get everybody kind of on board, so then we're dealing with one way across the whole county, you know, we can get all the townships and the cities and everybody in.
And we are on board with that, so whatever you guys decide and how you are gonna be able to enforce it, we're, we're gonna support you with that.
And I don't know all the ins and outs, if it has to be all the cities and townships, all have to be in agreement in order to pass this, that would be a good question for Brian to answer. I'm not exactly sure on that part, if it works, I think that one is passed. But I believe that would make it the petty misdemeanor if you're over 21, and then a misdemeanor if you're under, or you can answer. Which gives him a little more, a little more skin in the game there to try and undo some court service type stuff, probation, that kind of thing, the petty misdemeanor kind of, that stuff, so.
Yeah, I think you'll see most of it start popping up towards March, dispensaries start opening up. That's when we'll be able to test it out.
Yeah, not a great answer though, this is...
State didn't leave anybody with a great...
Yeah, new territory. And I think that was purposely done.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I was just kind of more asking, just because I, you know, the questions, they'll come up, you know, whether it's in August when everybody decides that, you know, they're 20 and in college again and they're just gonna go smoke it up like Cheech and Chong, or if it's two months down the road when some of these questions, you know, so.
Yeah, well, I think right now we're gonna take each one of those, maybe an individual thing, I think there's gonna be different circumstances. One of the main thing we're pushing our deputies for right now is impairment, especially when it comes to driving. That's one thing that our sheriff is not willing to fluctuate on whatsoever, so there's different, different things that we're looking for if you're under the influence of marijuana, and we definitely don't want impaired people on marijuana driving around under ultra county, so that is gonna be the main thing that we're pushing for. Different tactics maybe, you know, the state of Minnesota is the first state in the United States to make all drug paraphernalia legal.
Oh, of course.
So, spoons, meals, all that kind of stuff, it's all illegal.
Wow.
So that...
Was that part of this?
Yep.
You use all of that stuff for weed?
Uh, do you?
But, I mean, that complicates things right there, you know, so all those things that we used to kind of use tools, tricks of the trade to get into vehicle and stuff, we just lost all that.
Well, yeah, and reasonable...
In and of itself.
Yeah, reasonable, like reasons to search a vehicle and stuff, you know, like, wow. How do you test for impairment?
Well, standardized field sobriety tests. There's certain clues that they're looking for, if it's marijuana, or maybe a stimulant or a depressant or something like that. And then we always get down to implied consent, and then it's a blood test or a urine test, that kind of thing, so. You might see us, right now we don't have any official drug recognition experts, but that might be something we start moving forward in the future here if this becomes an issue. So far, we've done okay with it, but the problem with marijuana is it's staying in your system for so long, so just having them out there doesn't make you guilty of the DUI. We still have to be able to prove impairment, just like with the other drugs, but if you have meth or cocaine in your system, if it's there, you're guilty as well. Kind of hold that all in for alcohol if I don't think of that way. One stop.
Not an easy road ahead.
Did you at one point just bring up the speeding stuff?
Um, I know we've talked about that in several meetings, and we're talking about getting some radar devices and stuff just to deter people from speeding down high proper areas, yeah.
Why don't you bring it up again if you've already?
Well, I mean, we can definitely talk about it. I mean, I think it's always an ongoing issue because people just don't, don't obey the laws there.
I was more going towards the officer's comment, but...
Oh.
I didn't know if you... Okay. So, I don't know if it was a month or two ago, we had an officer that stopped up here, and there was a lot of complaints about speeding specifically out on Breckenridge. And he, he asked, I don't know if it was Christie or Michael...
Christie, yeah.
Oh, okay, so he asked Jess, you know, what do I do about the speeders? We use the radar unit.
Which is kind of what I just told him.
Yeah.
Like, pull over, you know, like...
Is he a new officer?
I didn't know, I didn't recognize the person, and I don't, I'm not familiar with him, so I don't even know who it was, so. It definitely wasn't the handful of people that I am familiar with that are frequent around here, so I'm not sure.
Well, I, and I don't know who this is, but again, if you, if you've got some of these, like the speeding issues or the parking issues, just shoot me an email, I can take care of that stuff. That's kind of what I'm here for. And depending on what sergeant is working, if it's his team or his district, if this is his district or not, and then I also have access to our traffic division too, so we'll put together some squads and we'll have the laser out there and we can do a little saturation in that area. We've done several of them along Highway 12. I guess I didn't know that there was an issue on Breckenridge?
There's a few streets. First Street, Breckenridge, like Whitetail, kind of the, well, First Street as a main highway, basically, and then Breckenridge and Whitetail, I think because they are so far out of town that people just, it's like a country road and they just zip, you know, it's Clementa and then those two.
And variety of times, I'm assuming, it's probably not just locked into one specific time.
What do you think?
It's whenever.
Yeah, whenever, yeah.
I have seen a lot of posts of officers being posted out there, these persons past weekend, so at least there. I know deputies have sat out there. I spent some time on Breckenridge at first, and a lot of these are citizen complaints, and we've talked about this before too.
It can seem like they're going super fast, yeah.
Thirty to 33 miles per hour on those streets make it seem like they're going 60, right? But my radar's saying 29, 30, kind of hard.
But some, just sometimes just the visual deterrent of having some squad cars out there, you know, I think that...
Like they are watching.
Helps slow people down and also lets everybody else know that, oh, hey, we do have some squad cars out here that are doing something, so.
And like I mentioned too, we're gonna get some electronic speed signs to put up as well, too.
So, I've seen mixed results with those, just saying. Some of them are, some of them are good, but then some of them, it's almost like, let's see if we'll get the high score on this.
Great.
I've seen it both ways. That's what we've done with our, we have the trailer, right, with the recording device, and we see, we see that happen where it's pretty accurate, but then all of a sudden you get that one that's like 90 or something, so.
Can we get a two-digit one?
Asking for a front... On command.
Okay, other chronic pickup issues from the trucks right now?
I mean, all of it, it's been the parking.
Yeah, the parking is...
You know, in the neighborhood speeding, but like you said. I think First Street too also has an issue of actually stopping at stop signs. They think it's mostly just an implying, maybe it's just a...
Contrary popular belief, the one with the white border are not options.
Nope, taken.
You know, so I just think, you know, if it's seen, well, no, fall over. You know, I think that's gonna be a lot of return, you know. If you try, you know, I mean, I don't live on First, but I definitely go down there and I see a lot, and I know you live down there and you see it all the time, but, yeah. I mean, there's definitely, I mean, I know I walk, walk my dogs through there and see a lot of things.
Do you walk way on First?
Yeah. Off to Elm Street.
The only other thing that I would like to bring up, just, it's something that has been brought up to me by residents in town too, is just that whenever they have time just to see the deputies driving around, they, kind of gives them a sense of comfort when they're, see them driving around instead of when they're not. Obviously, sometimes they're sitting because they're looking for things, whether it's stop sign issues or speeding or whatever, but just that, you know, when they have the time to do it, people like to see them cruising the neighborhoods.
And in Montrose, you're in a unique, unique position right here too, because you've got two districts that are coming together in Montrose. So you might have some area cars that have picked Montrose and sent you some reports in or something like that, and that's kind of what you're gonna be getting at. So you're probably gonna see some more of that where it's not actually the town car that's sitting there, it just happens to be the same colored squad car that we have because they're doing something else inside that car too, so I would just kind of keep that in mind a little bit.
Yeah.
And the Southwest and the South East are kind of converging right here, so, border town effect.
I know they're out there, seeing everybody.
Anything else? Okay, Ray County Annual Contract Discussion.
Um, you guys have all been sent copy of the contract, as well as the slides were included in the packet, and I did, I sent those before too. The rate is increasing, as we all know, and David and I both attended the meeting that was held by Sheriff Caringer to discuss the contract and kind of the reasons why behind the increase, and just sort of some trends that they're seeing within policing, so, in general, right? I mean, is it, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's now getting more cutthroat as less and less people want to actually join the police departments, especially in this state, and I think Sean did a great job of looking everything around Ray County, where everybody else is at, and trying to be competitive in that area in order to find the right people. I think he explained, you know, they don't just grab somebody and go. I think he's, he went in depth, in depth about the quality of people and the rigorous, you know, exams that go through to get them out on, just physically but psychologically, so I don't know how Kevin made it through, but...
And, yeah.
But I do think, you know, Ray County has set a standard in the state as far as who's coming on board and...
All the other metro areas kind of competing against them to have quality people, you know, you need to pay, so.
Yeah, like airport, I mean, federal money there, so they're 50 bucks an hour starting paid for new people. I think, you know, you guys have lost a few people to Bloomington, I believe.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, but...
Yeah.
As of right now, I think we're about three over right now with this new wage benefit that they pushed through. I think we've got about 12 that are on field training right now or just about to start, so we're actually sitting a lot better now with the changes that the sheriff has made, and we're seeing that high quality of candidates starting to move, so.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, even at that meeting, and he said he's short 16 at that point, so I mean...
Yeah, and then we had a couple that were kind of, you know, pending
Yeah.
the contract, you know, and, and wage increases and stuff, because, you know, people are looking to get, to get paid a wage for this, and there's a lot of competition out there, so.
He talked about going and they'll, they go, go up to Alexandria to go get recruits, but recruits have already been taken before they'd even passed. I mean, that's how, that's how it is right now. So they have to get, you know, again, trying to get the cream of the crop and the individuals that are, you know, all with it to do their jobs, so.
There aren't the numbers of people going through the training in Alexandria and stuff that there were in the past. People are not wanting to do the job.
They said there were like 30 graduates this past year.
Yeah.
You know, so...
So unfortunately, you know...
At all, but I think, you said six had already accepted jobs before graduation.
So...
So I mean, as far as, as what, what he brought forth in the contract, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not something that's just trying to be a money grabber or anything like that, it's, you know, the other, you know, there might be other cities in the county that are looking at it a little bit differently, you know, being that they're a little bit bigger and stuff, and, you know, in order to get our own department in, we're talking six millimeters to say we want a police department, you know, and then we also don't get the advantages of using the county attorney that is a part of this as well, so I think there's a lot of things that we don't see that are part of this contract that make it very beneficial for a town this size.
I don't know if you had any other points that you've been in few meetings with Sheriff Caringer and...
Yeah, so we, you know, part of the contract rates, you know, like, Carver County does, the South does things a little bit differently down there, right? They're more of à la carte type contracting, where like if you have your two deputies that are assigned to town and one of them takes vacation, they're gone for 40 hours or 80 hours, they just go without a deputy. Where obviously, we, we're doing it here, you're guaranteed, you're gonna have a deputy in town, but then also you get the resources of the sheriff, there's our major crimes, our ERT, K-9, UAV, whatever else, I'm forgetting here, but all the resources that we can bring to bear. We're in Carver County, it's kind of sounds like if they assign a detective, you might get billed for the extra hours, the detective was working on this case or something like that, so that's where that à la carte comes in, and I guess we're, we're not Nick Glendig in like that, I think. I think everybody, I think everybody's got like a base level of service that you're not yet, and that's what we're trying to do, so.
They did not increase our hours, which some cities are seeing bad. That was my question. At what point do you think we're, we might have to increase hours?
Well, as your population grows or as you develop more businesses, that's something you might have to look at in the future, but looking at the annual report, and I think with you in Waverly and that unique contract, you're really kind of getting 16 hours of coverage a day and paying for 10. So, I'm not speaking out of turn here, but I see no point in, in increasing hours right now. I think the calls for service, if you looked at the annual report, you have the different graphs there. I think we have a car in town during those peak times, it all works out really good. I wouldn't recommend decreasing hours, but I sure, but I'm sure not wishing to have anybody increase hours.
Along with the increase, there's also a one-time assessment of, for us, it's $21,115.38, and that is to kind of frame everybody that's currently working at Ray County, kind of up to the new wages and sort of fill in that, that gap, and it's a one-time assessment that won't refer, and we do have some money coming from the state that can help offset that, so, and offset that and the increase for at least a couple of years, so.
Did they, I guess I missed it, if it was in there, but is it forecasted what the percentage... the percentage increase is gonna be over the next couple of years, now that I'm aware?
Sean, yeah, Sheriff Derringer explicitly said he's not gonna give you a number, because he doesn't know what it, it could be, and he doesn't wanna give something out there that's gonna be completely false to the county, and then have to come back to it, so it's, he did say it was gonna be a year-by-year kinda situation, see where everybody else is at, see whatever, you know, kinda, again, stay competitive, but not be, you know, so far above everybody else, that's not, not, you know, too much for us to be able to afford, so.
And speaking of the staying competitive part, I think we've, that's come up here a couple of times, just to put things in perspective, we had Carver Colony, and then Sherburne Colony, we're almost ten dollars an hour or more than what our starting wage was. Pretty tough when you're sandwiched between two counties like that, and you're looking at beating down sixteen people, I think that's what really got the ball rolling with this, and why the sheriff wanted us to have to do something, so. Now we're a little bit more than one, and just a little bit less than the others, so we're right in that happy medium, so, that's just for our starting wage, and that's all for our deputies and our sergeants, and sort of all of this is going forward, so.
Yeah, just like, just like everything else, you know, cost of their vehicles have gone up almost twice as much as it really used to be.
And with all the technology and stuff that goes into these squads, the, the technology is almost more expensive than the actual squad.
Well, and you guys are going to a completely encrypted channel now, aren't you, and it's gonna be a big, big ticket out of the US.
State spam baiting, we do that, yeah.
Now, there's some good information in the slides too, if you guys are gonna do it, like on page five of the packet, it kinda goes over like all the contracted services that are included with our wage, and then it kind of outlines the factors that they considered for setting the contract rate, the impacts in the different cities, and our public safety aid estimated amount is listed on page twelve, we're estimated to get a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred four dollars from the state this year, so.
And I believe that special assessment, Wright County voted to, basically they're paying the other half, and all the other cities are...
Yeah, 'cause they're portion of it, yeah.
Yep, so it's not, we're not taking on that full dollar amount as, as cities, so.
I thought Sheriff Derringer did a great job of justifying the need for, for the increase in the contract hour, or the contract amount per hour.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's a, a great organization that they run out there, and, you know, that goes all of these, it's something we're very, very lucky to have.
We appreciate you guys very much.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody likes to hear things are being raised up, but I mean, it, it is what it, you know, kinda is, and...
It's the world today, so.
Yeah, it's, this is something I don't think I wanna skip on, skip on, you know, just kinda... Especially with the THC.
Well, and that was one thing, for the joint power agreement that they kinda sent over, they can send over some information about that, and they will not be increasing our rate again to include that in there, it's just gonna kind of just be part of our service, so it's just gonna be something else that they have to deal with, but we're not paying an extra rate for that, so.
Multiple conversations with Chief Budgie and Captain Johnson about Buffalo, about how competitive everything is, so. Do you have to pay the, bring it top down, or the system?
Any other, any other questions about it, otherwise this probably won't be going in the August agenda for consideration for people.
Any other questions or comments for the Wright County Sheriff's Office? Just appreciate everything you've got.
Thank you.
Well, actually, if you go out there later, I turned off. Okay, then we're adjourned five thirty-four.